Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Florissant City Council, Monday, September 22nd, 2014. Item number one on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask that you stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is united, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Before we begin, if you wish to speak at the hearing from citizens portion of the meeting, I would prefer you to fill out a speaker's card located on the table at the entrance to the chambers. If you'll complete that card and hand it to Mr. Hessel, he will pass them along. Item number two, roll call to members. Clerk, please conduct the roll call.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Shildroff.
Here.
Henke.
Here.
Pagano.
Here.
Schmidt.
Hernandez is absent.
Lee.
Here.
Jones. Item number three, approval of minutes. Mr. Jones makes a motion to accept the meeting minutes and the executive meeting minutes of the September 8th, 2014 meeting, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item number four, proclamation, Your Honor.
Whereas the number of elderly Americans with disabilities is dramatically increasing, whereas assisted living is a long-term care service that fosters choice, dignity, independence, and autonomy in our elderly nationwide, and whereas the National Center for Assisted Living proudly created National Assisted Living Week to determine or to demonstrate how much we care for our residents and appreciate the staff members that deliver care every day. Whereas the theme of the National Assisted Living Week 2014, The Magic of Music, highlights the healing effect music can have on individuals living with dementia such as Alzheimer's disease, whereas almost forty percent of assisted living residents have some type of dementia. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Schneider, Mayor of the City of Florissant, do hereby proclaim the week of September 7th through 13th, 2014, as National Assisted Living Week of the City of Florissant. I urge all citizens to visit friends and loved ones who reside in these communities and to learn more about how assisted living services benefit our communities.
Got me on a short leash tonight. We have Rachel Griffith and Venus Marsh here from the Bridges at Florissant, and it's a very important work that they do to make life more comfortable and more rewarding for those of us that need a little bit of extra help. Why don't you tell us about your mission and what this award means or this week means to all of our citizens that need this kind of service?
Well, it's National Assisted Living Week, and we are license level two at the Bridge at Florissant, and we are so proud to be your only continuum of care here in the City of Florissant, and this proclamation means a lot to us and to our staff and to our residents.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to thank you, as well as the City of Florissant, the council, for being so supportive of us. Over the past year, we've grown by almost fifty percent, and I believe that's in large part to the support of the community as well as to individuals like yourself, so thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Venus.
Item number five on the agenda is the mayor's budget message. Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my duty to present the budget for the council to consider. Our proposed budget for 2015 is at your stations. As Mayor of the City of Florissant, it's my responsibility to submit a proposed budget for the upcoming 2015 fiscal year. The proposed budget of just over thirty-three million is submitted in compliance with Section 6.6 of the City Charter and Section 67010 of the Missouri Revised Statutes. The 2015 proposed budget provides a complete financial plan for the general capital improvement, park improvement, shore lateral, and property revitalization funds. This budget contains a blueprint to continue to operate the city in a professional manner and with the same high level of programs and services that our residents expect. One of my goals with this proposed budget, as with my past budgets, is to anticipate expenditures for the next fiscal year so as to reduce the need for supplemental appropriations. As always, preparing the annual budget has been a difficult process. Revenue budgeted for the general fund is up three hundred and thirty-eight thousand in 2014. Sales tax revenue in the capital improvement fund is up a hundred thousand, and sales tax revenue in the park improvement fund is up seventy-five thousand. The health reserve is crucial to maintaining a consistent level of services and programs over time. Reserves provide a cushion necessary to bridge the ebbs and flows of the city revenue streams from one year to the next. The general fund is projected to have a reserve balance of nine point one million. In July 2014, a new pay plan was adopted by the city council, which gave full-time employees a one percent across-the-board increase and instituted a new pay plan schedule, which provides a two percent merit pay step increase. The 2015 budget reflects these new compensation plans. The city pays a hundred percent of employee healthcare and twenty-five percent for dependent. Medical premiums are projected to increase by seven percent, which will add just over a hundred and thirty thousand to their general fund budget and ten thousand to their park improvement fund budget. Some of this increase is due to costs associated with implementation of the Affordable Care Act. The economic situation continues to present challenges but has noticeably improved in 2014. Sales tax in the general fund, our single most important revenue source, is budgeted to increase four hundred thousand. Of the other major revenue sources, gasoline tax is up twenty-five thousand, utility tax is up two hundred thousand. As Mayor, I continue to encourage industrial development, manufacturing, warehousing, retail, and commercial developments in Florissant and the greater North County area in an effort to provide jobs for our current and future residents. We have had economic development success in achieving an encouraging level of commercial investment in the City of Florissant, which will help us in future budgets. I believe the proposed budget presents a reasonable and conservative framework for continued high levels of service, given the issues facing the city, both now and in the future. Highlights of the proposed budget include the following: continued funding for the salary step plan adjustment and one percent across-the-board increase for full-time personnel that the city council passed last July. The proposed budget includes funding for six new positions to address issues related to code enforcement and public works efforts. These positions include a civil engineer, one to replace a full-time engineer tech position, two multi-inspectors, one health department seaman position, and two clerk typists. The hours for part-time positions continue to be monitored so that no part-time position will be regularly scheduled to work more than thirty hours a week. The proposed budget addresses a number of equipment needs and building improvements for the public works, parks, and police departments, including four hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred for vehicles, seventy-six thousand seven hundred for mores, a hundred thousand seven hundred for computers and related software, fifty thousand to sandblast paint the indoor pool, and forty thousand to sandblast paint the lazy river pool at Coke Aquatic Center. Three hundred and ten thousand has been allocated for the renovation of the tennis courts at Tower Court Park, continued upon the city receiving reimbursement from a St. Louis County Municipal Park Grant Fund, estimating reimbursement to be two hundred and eighty thousand. Eight hundred and twelve thousand has been allocated for insurance coverages other than medical insurance. This includes two hundred and seventy-five thousand for general liability, three hundred and seventy-five thousand for workman's comp, and a hundred and fifteen thousand for property insurance. The proposed budget requires the use of just over one point nine million from the general fund reserves, is projected that the general fund will still have a reserve balance of seven point two million, and after the use of reserve funds, which is twenty-nine percent of the budget and well above our policy of targeting a reserve balance of at least ten percent. At this point, it appears that the turnback of the amount of revenue received in excess of the amount budgeted and budgeted expenditures not spent in 2014 fiscal year should be around one point eight million. The general fund reserve will be in good shape should the proposed budget be adopted. The use of reserve funds is necessary and prudent use of resources at this time. The proposed budget is a balanced budget. I wish to thank all of the department heads for their diligence and hard work in assisting the administration in the preparation of the proposed budget. I also wish to express my appreciation for the suggestions and encouragement of members of the city council during the preparation. I commend all the employees of the City of Florissant for their hard work and dedication to the residents of the city. It will be my pleasure to discuss the proposed budget with the Florissant City Council and to continue working for the progress of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Agenda item number six, hearings from citizens. I'll point out that this is not a question-and-answer session. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to state to the city council what's on their mind. Number one, Mr. Kevin O'Donnell. And sir, if you will, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Florissant, 62031. I'm here this evening to speak about the forum that we had last week over at the Civic Center, at the Egan Center, and the one that's going to be done on September 25th, this Thursday. And I'd just like to say, it was a good presentation, but it wasn't a forum. I would have appreciated, and there's a lot of other people would have appreciated, if we could have had more of a question-and-answer session where, like Mayor Lowry did in the past, taking the little postcards and taking questions and write your questions down, turn them in, and just, I mean, it would have been more informative. We knew more about the... Most of us have access to what different people do and what their jobs are in the city. And I just think it would be great, especially with the situation in Ferguson, if we could have had a little longer time with Chief Lowry, because there were a lot of people that didn't get answers answered about the possibilities of the same situation or similar situation happening in Florissant. And I think it would be great if the next forum could actually be a forum where people can write questions in and maybe cut out some of the other stuff that isn't really pertinent to a forum. And it sounded like we were trying to sell the city to a new resident when most of the people that were there were elderly, like myself. And I had attended the senior breakfast that morning, and it was wonderful. It was a great, great presentation also, and I appreciate all the information for the different services in the city. But I'd like to see a forum where people could actually get some questions answered and not just go there and just listen, because we can do that on television, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Kaiser, if you'll state your... Name your address for the record, and good to see you, Mr. Kaiser.
It's been a while, Joseph, but I still remember all this stuff. My name is Walter Kaiser. I live at 105 North St. Charles Street for over sixty years. And council members, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hessel, been a while. You've got some new faces. I'm not sure I like them all, but so it be it. I have two items. The first, in case you haven't noticed, we have a new veteran of the year. His name is Dr. Joe Quick. His name's on the hall, in case you've been speeding down the hall and haven't noticed. He is posted there. Also, the Veterans Parade will be the ninth of November. Write it down. Make sure you put it on your calendars. We'll see everybody there. I'd like to see you there, too, Mr. Hessel, if you could make it. And it will start from St. Burton Inn and St. Francis at one o'clock, and proceed by various routes up to the Egan Center, where there'll be a short speeches, and probably the mayor will have something to say up there, and we'll have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Michael Tyree. Mr. Tyree, if you'd be so kind to state your name and your address for the record.
Michael Tyree, 1001 Locas. I'd like to start off by commending Mr. Lee and Mr. Hernandez, who is not here tonight, for attempting to get taxes reduced in the city. I'd like to thank them publicly for that, for a tax increase that was instituted by a mayor who really shouldn't have done it. You know, he lied to three or four hundred people over at Coke Park. "I'm not going to raise taxes. The economy's too bad." But then three months later, the taxes went up. So, Mr. Lee, thank you. Mr. Hernandez, when we see him, we'll thank him again, too. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Tyree. Sarah Scherth? Good evening, ladies. If you'll state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Courtney Neisler. I'm 1335 Bluefield Drive, Florissant, 6033.
I'm Sarah Schalera, 20665563033.
Hi, guys. We're here tonight. We want to promote... We are starting a foundation called the Glory Road Foundation, and we would like to open a teen center in Florissant. So, you know, teens like us. We can stay out of trouble, and we have something to do on the weekends, rather than going out and, you know, doing bad things. You know, we have somewhere to hang out, and we have recreational activities to do, like movie nights, dances, arcade games, you know, something just to keep us occupied for the weekend, because we have been doing it at the house, and we have outgrown the house, and more people are joining the foundation, and we just have nowhere to put them. So, we would really like to bring up the idea of opening a teen center. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I have about five or six other cards from speakers with the same topic. All right, very good. Let's start with Mary Moon. You can bring them all up, sure.
Okay. My name's Mary Moore, and I'm at 3725 Seville. I have been a resident... Like, I used to live in Colleen, Texas, in Hawaii. They're military brats. These two are mine. We have been in Florissant for about twelve years, and then my cousins, actually, longer. We moved away for a year so I could stack my chips and get a house, a big, big house, so I could come back and service the kids that I've been doing since they've been at Robinwood, since little bitty things. So, I've got a history of doing this. I know we've been promoting this. We've passed out at least five thousand flyers. Been working really hard. I even bugged you, Mayor, when I first moved back over here, and I've been talking to Beth. I'm like always on the phone saying, "What can I do? What can I do?" So, we are trying to open a teen center. This is what I specialize in. I'm not a fly-by-night. I know how to deal with worst-case scenarios, best-case scenarios. I've dealt with the... I hate to say the worst kids, but I've dealt with harder kids. So, this is for the kids that are actually... You know, normally, you always come to help the kids that are in trouble. Well, let's keep the kids that are good. You know, let's reward them for something, too. You know, a lot of the funds always go to the city. Well, the county needs it, too, and that's what I'm here to do. I'm like mom to the community. You know, my daughter's nineteen. I still... I know everything that's going on. I'm there. I keep them busy. And I've set it up to where the kids can come and, you know, work for us. There's two sides. We've got the foundation side, and then we have our literary side. So, I do a magazine, basically try to inspire and keep them busy. You keep them busy, they're going to stay. They're going to be good citizens. So, that's what we do. We just had a party this Friday. You know, they were watching Insidious Two. That was the big wild night, you know? While other kids, they had a choice. They could come where we were at, or they could go smoke weed, literally. That was a choice, and go drink. And they chose to make the good decision and come here. And on that subject, like during the time when McClure North, that's where my kids go, you know, we try... We create it sober, cool. So, this is the ex bartender in me. We have parties that are non-alcoholic, and we promote that, and these are the things that we've been doing since I moved back over here. Like I said, I'm Florissant-bound. I've been here for a long time. I choose to live here. I moved away from St. Charles to come here and take care of these kids. This is what we do. The teen center is going to be about media, you know, arts and crafts, gaming. They'll be able to come in and do photography. I have professors lined up from Lindenwood. I have retired teachers, you name it. I have that. What I don't have is the funding. We've been getting up at three o'clock in the morning on the weekends and doing eight-hour shifts, passing stuff out. We've been begging and pleading with everybody in the community. You know, we've been going to residence houses, you know, trespassing just to get the word out. The administration, we've hit every car you could think of, every Target parking lot. And then we're also about the civic. It's not just the teens. We actually had a car wash at... Where was it at? Bedroom Store. And we did it in the blazing heat, August the ninth, and we... Well, we took that money. We had the sale before that, I mean, the car wash before that, but we took that money, and we created enough... We bought enough school supplies. We gave away two hundred full school supply kits to the kids in the community. And we had put Florissant, but we included Florissant. We had people come from O'Fallon. You know, I still have stuff to this day. I mean, I have stuff. We gave scientific calculators. So, right now, even though we're trying to get the money for ourselves, we're not going to wait. We're still doing things for the community. We're collecting coats. We know it's getting cold. We didn't know it was going to be cold last week, but we already had these flyers out the week before. We're collecting food. We're doing that. And on the 22nd of November, we're going to have a free dinner for the people over here that need it. So, we're both. We're civic. And then we're also going to have tutoring after school. We're going to have things where the kids, especially teenagers, you know, they get bombarded with credit card applications. So, we're not having that. We're going to keep their credit good. We're going to have... I have lenders that are ready to teach these kids all about keeping their credit good. So, those are all the things that we want to do. So, hopefully, you guys can find something to help us out. We're doing grants. I had the business two and a half years. It took up until August the first to get it, 5013C. So, we're doing the grants. We're about to, anyway. So, whatever you can do to help us, please, please help us, because my house is a big house, but it's outgrown, and a lot of parents don't know me as to want to leave their kids and have them come over to a house, which I wouldn't let my daughters go. So, we need a space, funding something, please. And we will not have problems with the community. I had an older gentleman say, "You know, we don't want that in our neighborhood." I said, "Well, you know what? You don't want these kids walking around in the neighborhood either." So, that's what I'm here to do.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for listening. Thank you, everyone.
Item number seven, communications, and I see none. Item number eight, public hearings. Public hearing 1409024.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 405-135 of the Florissant City Code, the zoning ordinance as amended, that a public hearing will be held by the city council of the City of Florissant in St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 for St. Francois on Monday, September 22nd, 2014, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To authorize an amendment for Burger King to B5 Ordinance Number 5307 as amended to allow for the remodel of an existing business located at 8411 North Lindbergh with signed changes. Citizens will have end parties with interest. Will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact City Clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Ms. Vossen Kemper? Good evening, ma'am. And for the record, if you'll state your name and your address, I'd appreciate it.
Charlene Vossen Kemper, and the Burger King address is 8411 North Lindbergh in Florissant.
Very good. And who do you have you with you this evening, ma'am?
I'm Jim Brinkmeyer, also with Burger King, 11854 Lackland Road in St. Louis, 63146.
Very good. Thank you both for being here this evening. If you guys take a few minutes, explain the project that you guys have before us tonight.
Yeah, I'll put up pictures. I brought the Burger King we remodeled like two years ago, so you guys can kind of get a feel for it. We are not painting brick. That's not going to happen. So, the pictures that we did before have painted brick. Ignore that, so you can just see what else we're going to do. So, I brought our store, how it looks now, which is this picture. Okay. Oh, I have it upside down. Okay, so you can see before and after. So, the Burger King before, this is the front view, and the brick won't be painted again. I have a couple more. Doesn't it look a lot better? And this is on the drive-through side. No paint on the brick.
I understand you're...
Right. That's correct.
Can you, in as much as you can, explain the interior renovations that you're going to do?
Inside the restaurant, the only thing we're doing is a new dining room package and a new ceiling, paint the walls, new bathrooms. That's it. New... Oh, new dining room floor as well. It'll look gorgeous.
And from start to finish, how long do you anticipate this renovation will take, please?
The longest would be eight weeks, but we're hoping for four to six, depending on weather, as long as everything goes well.
Okay. And will this... Will you be open during renovations?
We will be open except for the bathrooms. When we're doing the bathrooms, we'll close during that time.
I don't have any further questions. Anyone in the council? All right. Before we close this hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to take the opportunity to comment on this renovation? Seeing none, Mr. Henke moves to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much, and good luck with this project. Public hearing number 1409025.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 405-135 of the Florissant City Code, the zoning ordinance as amended, that a public hearing will be held by the city council of the City of Florissant in St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 for St. Francois on Monday, September 22nd, 2014, at 7:30 PM. To issue an amendment for Mission Hills Development DBA GMT Auto Sales to B5 Ordinance Number 6166 as amended, by rescinding special use ordinance Number 7550 as amended, located at 365 North Highway 67, and B5 Ordinance Number 5877 as amended, located at 620 Charbonneere, and consolidating 225 and 365 North Highway 67, and 620 and 624 Charbonneere into one car leasing establishment and allowing for signage. Citizens and parties of interest will have an opportunity to be heard at said public hearing. Anyone with special needs should contact City Clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Good evening, sir. And if you will, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joe Dale, architect and agent for GMT Auto, and my address is 743 St. Mary's Road, Villa Ridge, Missouri.
Very good, and you may make your proposal.
Yes. Mr. Travers has an opportunity to buy 620 Charbonneere Road, which is contiguous to the current GMT Auto Center on North Lindbergh. This property became available, and by purchasing it, there is a chance, an opportunity to connect the lot that fronts on Lindbergh to this Charbonneere, which will eliminate a very often U-turn made for people getting access into his lot as they approach from Highway 27. for people getting access into his lot as they approach from Highway two seventy. Currently, there's a concrete island all the way along this frontage on North Lindbergh, and you cannot make a left into his lot. So what happens is people go to the lighted Charbonneer. They make the left, but there's also a median there, which they have to go through the BP. They do a U-turn around that median. They come back to Lindbergh and make a right by Waffle House, which is here on the corner. And they get into, they make the right and come back in to make a right into the lot. So, and every time I've been out there, we've been out there with city officials and that. I'm there for ten, twenty minutes. There are four or five U-turns made at this intersection all the time. And the city engineer even said this is one of the more frequently accident-prone intersections in the city of Florissant. So what we would be doing is, is using the existing curb cuts, and we can really only use one of them. You see this here? This is Charbonneer Road, and there are existing two curb cuts, but we will only use one where you see the cars parked here. That's a curb cut that we won't use. You can't get in there because the concrete median in Charbonneer prevents you to make a left. But the second curb cut will allow us, and by with re-striping, we can come in that curb cut, come down, and then remove fencing and a gate at this end of the lot. And that is contiguous with the current GMT lot. And that way, we can get through there, up to the sales offices. There is an existing building here, and there probably at this point will be sales staff. There's, it's the former Iggy's Cake Decorating. It's a very nice octagonal building with a lot of ga- glass. So if you're a salesperson watching the lot, it's easy to see people coming in. So that'll probably be used. There's no proposed changes to that building. It's in, it's in good shape. But this was primarily an opportunity to get that curb cut and access point off of Charbonneer. And we did propose some signage that we got approved through planning and zoning for another pole sign and entrance sign at that second curb cut that we're gonna use. So the project really entails mainly a curb island for the sign, the sign itself, some landscaping there, and some re-striping and some fencing. It's not a complicated construction project. But again, it does alleviate this U-turn situation that's been going on for years down at that property and at the lot.
That, that happens to be my warden. I'm very familiar with that U-turn problem. My, my question is, if I recall correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, when you go from the Waffle House west or northwest on Charbonneer, I think that's a prohibited left turn. Is that correct?
That, that, well, it is, as you, if you're per- you cannot make that left until you get to the curb, into the curb island. Same thing would apply for Waffle House. If you're proceeding on Charbonneer, you cannot make a left into there. Both of their curb cuts are blocked by that concrete median in Charbonneer. They can't do it either. So, but, but they can make, if you're, if you're on Charbonneer, you can make a left and then make a right into their lot. But again, this is, all has to do with the approach coming from two seventy and that. But even at that, if you were going to Waffle House, they probably would do the same thing, is to make that, that left around there.
And is, right now, there's no plan to take down the building there?
No, no, no. And it possibly, it, you know, like I said, it's more than likely that front area of it would make a good sales office for additional sales staff. We will have the opportunity to put a few display cars on it, but most of the customer parking will still be up at the main office.
I don't have any further questions? Mr. Henke?
Just for clarification, westbound on Charbonneer, you can make a left into that existing property now. But coming out of the property, you cannot make a left.
Yeah, if you're, if, if you're coming from, from Charbonneer towards Lindbergh, from, from that direction, you can make the right.
The right into it. But I'm saying if you, if you come, you'll be heading north on Lindbergh and making a left on the Charbonneer, you can make a left into the existing, which is Fishers and Iggy's or whatever. You can make a left in there now, but you can't make a, you cannot make a left out of there. But you can turn, go through and make the right and go down to Lindbergh.
Right. This, like I said, this, this curb cut here is the only one that's really practical for a left turn. Other, from there on down to Lindbergh, this one, Waffle House, it's all blocked by the concrete. And we did, we talked to MODAB, but they weren't very receptive to removing the island.
But just for clarification. Thank you.
How do you, how do you believe that this will eliminate the U-turn problem?
From what we've seen, the several times we've been out there, a lot of this U-turn has been going on because of the high traffic and the volume that GMT gets. There, you know, that we've, we've annexed a lot. We took a building down a couple of years ago to annex some more space. The old truck top place, that was taken down. Part of this project actually will entail a consolidation. There are four lots that are actually in play on this whole development. These two large parcels here are the North Lindbergh lots. That was, the smaller one was the Truck Top Place. It's now all display, car display. These are the two smaller lots at six twenty Charbonneer that will be part of this project. This plat is a preliminary because we, again, waiting for approval. But we had this done because part of the city requirements there would be this entire, all four of these lots would be consolidated to one. But from what we've studied here and ongoing, even with talking with Glenn before ever, I've been working for him for about four or five years now, the amount of traffic and that, that makes that U-turn to get into his lot. Because if you do it, there's only one other entity there. That's the Waffle House. But by and large, the, the traffic count is, is headed into GMT. And, and that, as long as I've been working for him, I've seen it, but even before that, because of the islands, the way the islands are set up and the medians, concrete medians work on Lindbergh and Charbonneer.
All right, thank you. Before we close this meeting, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, Mr. Lee moves to close the public hearing, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, sir. Good luck. Old Business, second readings. Bill ninety twenty-seven. Ms. Pagano makes a motion for a second reading for this bill, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk?
Ordinance authorizing an amendment to special use permit number twenty twenty-seven, as amended, to allow for the remodeling of the property located at forty-five ninety-five Washington.
Ms. Pagano makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk?
Ordinance authorizing an amendment to special use permit number twenty twenty-seven, as amended, to allow for the remodeling of the property located at forty-five ninety-five Washington.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa? Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Bill number ninety twenty-seven passes and becomes ordinance eighty seventy-four, eight zero seven four. Bill ninety twenty-nine. I make a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Park Improvement Fund to account number zero nine six one, capital additions for the replacement of the ball field lights and light poles for Field One, Field Number One and Field Number Two in St. Ferdinand Park.
Mr. Henke makes, makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from Park Improvement Fund to account number zero nine six one, capital additions for the replacement of the ball field lights and light poles on Field Number One and Number Two in St. Ferdinand Park.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? If you'd be so kind as to state your name and your address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Kevin O'Donnell, five twelve Rancho Lane, Florissant, Missouri, six three oh three one. My question is, the previous ball fields, I read the memos on this, and it said the previous ball field, the ball field lights were replaced at a cost of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Those three hundred thousand dollars allocated back then. First thing I'd like to know is, did that seventy-five thousand dollars that was al- that seventy-five thousand dollar difference, was that given back to the city, turned back in, or was it used for something else? And number two is, I still don't understand why they wanna have three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars more than what the previous two lights cost. Only the fact that maybe that the next person that comes in says, hey, I can get it done for three hundred thousand and still keep it under the three hundred and twenty-five thousand. I would like to, I, I'd just like to know if there's an actual estimate. Is there an estimate right now? Are we gonna wait until after the money's appropriated before we can get it, get an estimate on this?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, seconded by Mr. Shildroff, to ask Mr. Barrett to explain this to Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor? Any roll call vote, ma'am? Voice vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Mr. Barrett, if you'd be so kind as to come up and render an explanation, I'd be appreciative.
Evening, counsel. In reference to the appropriation amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, we have a cost estimate, which we had prepared earlier on, two hundred and ninety-one, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, to complete the two other fields, Fields One and Two. Fields One and Two are situated quite a bit farther from the power source that we have to get power from than Fields Five and Six, which we just did. Additionally, we might need a few luminaires and an extra to light the fields to the standards that we need to do. So we did get a very good contractor and a very good price for Phase One, so we were very fortunate for that, for that bid to come in well. There's no guarantee we're gonna get that same contractor again. And it's our duty to prepare a cost estimate with contingency to ensure that we accomplish the goals that we're trying to accomplish there.
You want to, counsel, have any questions of Mr. Barrett? Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
So do you know what happened to the other seventy-five thousand dollars from the first three hundred thousand dollars that was allocated?
If you see me after the meeting, I'll, I'll give that answer. I'll find that answer out for you, Kevin. I'm sure we didn't give it away.
Pardon me?
We didn't give it away. We still have the money.
No, I just wanna make sure that it went back into the, went back into the general revenue.
I'll find it out for you, Kevin.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other persons wishing to speak on this item, clerk, would you please poll the council?
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa? Shildroff?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Bill number ninety twenty-nine passes and becomes ordinance eight zero seven five, eighty seventy-five. Next item on the agenda, new business. Board appointments. Ms. Pagano? Seconded by Mr. Lee. Motion made by Mr. Lee, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Appointment carries. Mr. Shildroff?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to reappoint Paul Smith, eleven ten St. Burdenet, to the Citizens Participation Committee.
As moved by Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Appointment's made. And I would like to appoint Matt Hartman, three seventy St. Dennis, to the Board of Adjustments. That motion is made by Ms. Pagano, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any appointment carries? Thank you. Resolutions. Resolution nine seventy-four, which is a resolution of, is it you or me? Madam Clerk?
Resolution of the City of Florissant, supporting a grant application to replace the tennis courts at Tower Court Park.
Mr. Henke makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Is that roll call? For, motion for a second reading? That's the first reading? Motion for a second reading made by Mr. Henke and seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk?
Resolution of the City of Florissant, supporting the grant application to replace the tennis courts at Tower Court Park.
Mrs. Shildroff will make a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor?
Roll call.
A roll call vote?
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa? Shildroff? Henke? Pagano? Schmidt? Lee? Jones?
Prior to a final vote being taken on this resolution? I'm sorry. I'm really struggling today.
Resolution of the City of Florissant, supporting a grant application to replace the tennis courts at Tower Court Park.
Final, part of a final vote being taken on this issue, is there anyone in the audience would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa? Shildroff? Henke? Pagano? Schmidt? Lee? Jones?
Resolution nine seventy-four passes. Request. Request out of ward, ward number nine. Request for the transfer of existing non-conforming special use permit from Drews Kramer, DVA Cut Rate Liquor, to Cut Rate Liquor Enterprises LLC, DVA Cut Rate Liquor, for the operation of a packaged store located at twenty-one sixty-four, sixty-two to sixty-four North Waterford. Motion made by Mr. Lee, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Request carries. Bills for first reading. Ninety thirty.
Ordinance authorizing the transfer of an existing non-conforming special use permit from Drews Kramer, DVA Cut Rate Liquor, to Cut Rate Liquor Enterprises LLC, DVA Cut Rate Liquor, for the operation of a packaged liquor store located at twenty-one sixty-two through sixty-four North Waterford.
Mr. Lee makes a second, a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance authorizing the transfer of an existing non-conforming special use permit from Drews Kramer, DVA Cut Rate Liquor, to Cut Rate Liquor Enterprises LLC, DVA Cut Rate Liquor, for the property, for the operation of a packaged liquor store located at twenty-one sixty-two through sixty-four North Waterford.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a third reason, reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa? Shildroff? Henke? Pagano? Schmidt?
Yes.
Sorry. Lee? Jones?
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience? I'm sorry, I'm really struggling with that tonight.
I'm sorry. Ordinance, ordinance authorizing a transfer of an existing non-conforming special use permit from Drews Kramer, DVA Cut Rate Liquor, to Cut Rate Liquor Enterprises LLC, DVA Cut Rate Liquor, for the operation of a packaged liquor store located at twenty-one sixty-two through sixty-four North Waterford.
Now, final, prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone that would like to make a comment on this in the audience? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council. Sorry, Mr. Jones?
Sorry, do you feel I, I just wouldn't already said it? I'd just like to say, Drews, I hope you have a good retirement. Been there for many, many years. I've been here for me, a young man, I come through there and, you always run a great big business, I hope the new guy does too. This is the new owner, David Brown. Thank you very much. Thank you. Somebody sees us, you'll be impressed.
All right, now clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa? Shildroff? Henke? Pagano? Schmidt?
Yes.
Lee? Jones?
Yes.
Bill number 9030 passes and becomes ordinance 8077? 76. 8076. Ordinance 9031. I will make a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. I'm really not feeling good tonight. Okay, madam clerk, please read the bill.
I'm sorry. Ordinance authorizing amendment for Burger King to B5, ordinance number 5307, as amended to allow for the remodel of an existing located, existing business located 8411 North Lindbergh with signed changes.
All right, thank you. I will make a second motion for a second reading on this, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance, read the bill.
Ordinance authorizing amendment for Burger King to, for Burger King to B5, ordinance number 5307, as amended to allow for the remodel of an existing business located 8411 North Lindbergh with signed changes.
I will make a motion for a third reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa? Shildroff? Henke? Pagano? Schmidt?
Yes.
Lee? And Jones?
Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance authorizing amendment for Burger King to B5, ordinance number 5307, as amended to allow for the remodel of an existing business at 8411 North Lindbergh with signed changes.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this issue, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa? Shildroff? Henke? Pagano? Schmidt? Lee? Jones?
Yes.
Bill number 9031 passes and becomes ordinance 8077, 8077. Bill 9032, 9032.
Ordinance approving the settlement agreement with Century Link Incorporated, Century Tell of Missouri, LLC, DVA Century Link, Century Tell Long Distance, LLC, DVA Century Link Long Distance, Embark Missouri Incorporated, and the City of Florissant, Missouri.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by myself. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill again.
Ordinance approving a settlement agreement with Century Link Incorporated, DVA, no, no, Century Tell of Missouri, LLC, DVA Century Link, Century Tell Long Distance, LLC, DVA Century Link Long Distance, Embark Missouri Incorporated, and the City of Florissant, Missouri.
And Mr. Shildroff makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa? Shildroff? Henke? Pagano? Schmidt? Lee? Jones?
Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance approving a settlement agreement with Century Link Incorporated, Century Tell of Missouri, LLC, DVA Century Link, Century Tell Long Distance, LLC, DVA Century Link Long Distance, Embark Missouri Incorporated, and the City of Florissant, Missouri.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this issue, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa? Shildroff? Henke? Pagano? Schmidt? Lee? Jones?
Yes.
Bill 9032 passes and becomes ordinance 8078, 8078. Bill 9033.
Ordinance approving an appropriation of a total of $99,200 from General Revenue Fund, $80,000 to account number 4910, salaries, police, and $19,200 to account number 4913, benefits, police, to fund the additional overtime for the police department.
Council announcements. Mr. Shildroff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to remind everybody that our Fall Festival is on October 12th on St. Francis Street. It's one of our more popular events in the city. And as part of the Fall Festival, there's the annual chili cook-off. And I would like to encourage everyone to take part in the chili cook-off and taste some of the best chili in North County. I know several people on the dais are preparing their chili, and so are some farmer politicians in town. So I think it's a good time to take advantage of some great chili in North County. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Well, yes, I'd like to let you guys make time, the 25th, which is this Thursday, we're in town, and is very important, what's going on in this city. So if you guys can find time, please join us. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Yeah, I want to expound on the Fall Festival. We had the opportunity this year, we're going to be bringing in a really unique display from the World Bird Sanctuary. We're going to have the opportunity to bring in four birds of prey that'll be on display, and we're also going to have an American eagle that'll be there. That'll be there from, Karen, is it 12 to three, right? 12 to three. So it's going to be a really unique opportunity. If you haven't seen the eagle before, it's worth it just to come out for that as well. Mr. Shildroff, also, what place did you come in in chili last year?
Second.
Second place last year, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henke.
First and foremost, I will be entering the chili cook-off this year. What I'd like to point out, this Wednesday night is the Wednesday night out here in Ward Six. Wednesday night out at Hendel's, right over here on St. Dennis Street. It's always a good time, come out, Hendel's will have some food and drinks, and there'll be music, and it's just a good time, and it looks like the weather's going to be absolutely perfect. So I hope to see you Wednesday night.
Your honor?
While we're on Wednesday night, we're also going to have a dedication at 5:30 of a plaque to honor the second female to be so honored in our walk-through history. We'll be honored to, to recognize the contributions that Charlotte Ballard made to our community. That'll be at 5:30 at the intersection of St. Francis Street and St. Ferdinand, right across the street from Clix Heating and Cooling, and it's right across the street also where Ballard's had their plumbing business. And she was the first female licensed plumber, master plumber in the state of Missouri. She was a member, a founding member of many of the great organizations that we have for historical preservation, and she always helped those in need, no matter how busy she was. She's had a great example of citizenship. Appreciate Ms. Moore coming tonight. I've invited her to consider joining the Youth Advisory Commission as a adult member along with several of her charges. And speaking of the Youth Advisory Commission, we're going to be hosting the Halloween Dance and Costume Party Friday, October 23rd, 24th. That's from 6:30 to 9:00 at John F. Kennedy Center. That's for fifth and eighth, fifth through eighth grade, but the Youth Advisory Commission, those 14 and older, they always help out with those events. And I've also would like to let you know, another thing we have for youth, this is kindergarten through fifth, we always have the summer camp, but this winter, we're going to try something because during winter break, people still have their jobs, they still have, the kids would like to have something meaningful to do. So we're going to have a winter break camp for K through five, ages six to 10, from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., from Christmas break to, from December 22nd to January 2nd. Of course, not on the, no, nothing on Christmas Eve, or Christmas Day, or Christmas, or New Year's Eve, or New Year's Day. But other than that, those other days in that time period, we'll have a winter break camp. And so call the James J. Egan Center or the John F. Kennedy Center for more information. At the other end of the spectrum, we had the Senior Town Hall Meeting last Thursday. It was well-attended. We had presentation from, for them, for, from all of our department heads and from agencies and organizations that serve Florissant. And we also had a successful presentation for the general public that evening, also at, at James J. Egan Center. And we had almost 200 people in attendance for Wards Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Nine. And as Mr. Jones said, this coming Thursday, we will have a similar forum for Wards One, Two, Three, and Four. And again, we'll have many of the agencies that's, and organizations that serve Florissant in addition to the various department heads. We had on 9/11, this is a very patriotic, faith-based community, we had a very large attendance for the 9/11 ceremony at the VFW. It was, wasn't that long, but it was very well-attended, and many people stayed afterwards at the VFW to socialize and to reflect on the tragic events 13 years ago on the 11th of September. Many of you know, we had the Summer Concert Series in St. Ferdinand Park, and the Smash Band Superhits was the first concert to be rained out in quite a long time, but that's been rescheduled for the night, the night before the Fall Festival. So on Saturday, October 11th, before the Fall, Fall Festival, we'll have the Smash Band Superhits. And they're going to be at the Band Shell, which is already going to be set up at the Lawyer's Building at 100 St. Francis, which is at the intersection of St. Charles and St. Francis Street. And the street will be closed, so there'll be plenty of, plenty of room for everyone to listen to Smash Band. Might be a little bit, feel a little bit more crowded than it does on the hillside over by the lake, but I'm sure it'll be a good time, and the music will be bouncing off the building, so it'll, it'll be, it'll be a good time. Let's see. You already mentioned the Fall Festival, so last, you know, we just had the groundbreaking for Culvers, right before the last council meeting. The next wish list restaurant to come to town is going to be Jimmy John's, right across from churches at Washington at Lindbergh. And Jimmy John's is, they've already, already visited with us, they've already committed. They said we can talk about it, but they're going to prepare their own press release shortly. Hopefully, hopefully, we'll have that in a press release form this week. Thank you.
After we adjourn, we'll have a five-minute recess prior to going back into executive session. The next meeting of the City Council will be in October 13th, 2014, at 7:30, 7:30 p.m. Mr. Schmidt motions to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Henke. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? The council stands adjourned.